I call the meeting to order tonight. Before we get started with business, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is our time for public comment. Anybody wish to address the board? No? Okay. Now, Mr. Leganis, would you please introduce our new staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, rest of the school committee members. Once again, I stand up here as the proud principal to introduce our new staff to our team, our Whittier team. So first on the list, Dale Clements, vocational aide. Come on up, Dale. Yep, come on right on. Michael Crosby, vocational aide. Lindsay Cravetti, English instructor. Amanda D'Angelo, dental assisting instructor. Lauren Fontaine, special education instructor. Adam Gagny, assistant principal. Catherine Samazic, math instructor. Bob Hardy, interim plant facilities manager. Jim Raza, maintenance tech. And Robert Flood, maintenance technician. And there you have it, the new team members.
Welcome. Glad to have you with us.
Awesome, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out. Hope you, if you didn't get a chance to eat, please do so. Okay? We have minutes to approve, the minutes of October 17.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Paul?
I move the approval of the minutes for October 17.
Second.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, we have one abstention. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And two abstentions.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the approval of the minutes of executive session, October 17.
Second.
I want to abstain.
Abstaining as well, Tony. Okay.
Also.
All right. So any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? No, but three abstentions. Okay. Treasurer's report.
Do you accept?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions or objections? No, hearing none, unanimous. We have no old business to discuss. Andrew, you're up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, and all other school committee members. Chess club is chugging along and meeting every Thursday. There are currently 15 members and everyone is having a blast while continuing to learn the game and excel in their game of chess. Student government has been very active over the month of November. This year for Veterans Day, student government organized a school-wide effort to recognize all staff members at the Whittier Tech who have served in the armed forces. The CAD drafting department designed a banner in recognition of all the Whittier veterans. The culinary arts department organized a small coffee dessert with our vets. And finally, the school newspaper is working diligently to produce the article for December edition profiling our veterans. The peer-to-peer club participated in a very successful walk for domestic violence awareness and raised $400. The money raised was donated to a program that aids adolescents who have been affected by domestic violence. Plans are being finalized for the annual canned food drive competition that collects foods to be distributed at the local food pantries. The chorus performed at our open house in the cafeteria. The students sang three vocal pieces. One of our seniors in the club also sang a beautiful solo piece. Chorus is still rehearsing daily and is preparing for the holiday concert which will be held on December 13th. The drama club, holding auditions for the 2019 musical Curtains on Tuesday, November 13th and Monday, November 19th. They are very excited about the show. It's a musical comedy, whodunit murder mystery created by Candor and Eb of Cabaret and Chicago Fan. The multicultural club designed and assembled their bulletin board to show at the open house. One of the members designed a brand-new logo for the club. It depicts their mission to celebrate and acknowledge the diversity in our community. Amongst those efforts, the club is preparing this year's coat drive which starts Monday after Thanksgiving. Peer leadership entered freshmen's homerooms again to show all useful resources available on the student internet. This included the published daily announcements of the day, the lunch schedule, and making an IT help ticket for any possible technical issues the students may encounter. Peer leaders also helped with tours at the open house, and many are helping out again with the eighth grade tours coming around. The key club had elected their officers and are well underway to a positive service year. This past week, they helped out at Kiwanis fundraising event, and in the coming weeks they will be volunteering at the Salisbury Sea Festival of Trees, the Christmas Stroll in Haverhill, and the VFW Santa Parade, and serving breakfast with Santa on the Salisbury Fire Department. The GSA is still looking for more members. All students are welcome to attend. Meetings are every other Thursday. Boys soccer had a very good season, finishing with a record of seven, nine, and two, but fell short of the playoffs by just one win. Prior to Whittier versus Ipswich game, Ipswich generously hosted Whittier's senior night, which had been rescheduled due to weather. We honored sixteen years that night. We thank the school committee for their continued support of Whittier Tech athletics. The boys and girls cross-country team wrapped up their season by participating in the state vocational meet, divisional meet last week. Our boys placed seventh and the girls placed fifth. It was very fun and exciting with the younger athletes placing and leading the charge. We're looking forward to the next year with all the young talent. Girls soccer finished up the season with senior night versus northeast on October 30th. We honored eight seniors that evening. We have already begun our recruiting efforts for next season in an attempt to bolster the team for next season. Girls varsity volleyball has their highest winning season since 2014 with a final record of 12 and eight. They placed fourth in the CAC overall and were seeded 13th in Division II of the MIAA State Tournament. Unfortunately, they fell to a very strong Western team in the first round. The Whittier varsity football team is playing well as they have a record of four and five. After losing so many players to graduation last year, these young players are performing well, accelerating in their spots, and most of all, still preparing for the season to come. The Thanksgiving football game and final game for our seniors will be on Wednesday, November 22nd, under the lights at Grade 11 Technical High School.
Thank you very much.
I just have one question. What's a GSA?
Gay straight alliance.
Okay. I was trying to think, government, student body.
Any other questions for Andrew? No? All right, thank you very much. Ms. Lynch?
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the committee. Tonight before you, for informational purposes, I have hires, a math instructor, long-term sub, a math MCAS retest after school for the fall program, a grade 12 SAT prep after-school program, evening school, tutors for students that are on medical leave, and a peer leader advisor. Also, I have before you resignations of an English instructor, a school nurse, and a maintenance mechanic. At this time, there is no budget update. As far as the MCAS, we had three juniors take the ELA MCAS retest November 8th, 9th, and 13th. There are 14 juniors taking the math MCAS retest November 14th and 15th. We ran a free MCAS after-school program for 14 students for three weeks prior to the start of the November retest. On Tuesday, October 23rd, I hosted the superintendent's advisory board meeting. At the meeting, Beverly DeSavo gave an update on our vocational programs, including the new dental assisting program. We had representatives, we had Representative Lenny Mara at the meeting. We had representatives from Senator Katie O'Connor's office and Senator Brad Hill as well, as well as other members of our board. On Wednesday, October 24th, I attended the annual Essex County Superintendent's meeting at the DA's office in Salem. At the meeting, we discussed the changes in SRO responsibilities in schools, as well as the uptick in vaping. On Thursday, October 25th, I attended the Movers Officers Meeting, the Board of Directors Meeting, and the General Membership Meeting in Marlboro. It's a long day of meetings, but I went to all three. Commissioner Jeff Riley spoke at the General Membership Meeting, and he seems very interested in vocational education and supportive of what we're trying to do here at Whittier. On Friday, October 26th, I attended the North Shore Superintendent's Roundtable. At that meeting, we discussed how to best work with students dealing with trauma, and we're seeing more and more students attending our schools that have significant emotional issues because of trauma that they've had to deal with, so we worked through some of that. On Tuesday, October 30th, I met with Glenn Burns, the principal of Haverhill High School, and Victoria Kelly, their career and technical education coordinator of Haverhill. I also want to thank Scott Wood for attending this meeting. On Sunday, November 4th, we held our annual open house, and I want to thank Beverly DeSavo and the entire administrative team, actually the entire school. It was an amazing event. I thought it was one of the best ever, and the response that we received from our community has been amazing. On Wednesday, November 7th, I attended, through the 10th, I attended the MAS joint conference in Hyannis along with seven of our school board members, and I assume we'll hear a little bit more about that later. On Tuesday, November 13th, I attended the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association Legal Update Meeting with attorney Mike Long, and he gave us an update on new school law issues that are occurring. On Tuesday, November 13th, I attended the YMCA Educator of the Year, and I'm happy to announce that Roxanne Grover was the Educator of the Year for the City of Haverhill at the YMCA. And yesterday, the same day she received the award, was her 40th anniversary here at Whittier. She has been a teacher here for forty years. And she's going strong. We don't want her to retire. We keep telling her. She has more energy than all of us, so.
She's not that old.
Yeah. How do you know? Also, just an update on the new Allied Health Center. I'm hoping that at our next school committee meeting, we can take a tour of our new Allied Health Center. This has been a construction project that we've been working on all year, and it's really exciting to see it coming together, and I think it's going to be a fabulous thing for our students for generations to come. I really think that we're doing it right, and it's going to show, and you know, I think our students deserve that. The other thing I want to talk about is the roof. We have a pipe that is leaning on the roof that is affecting the roof, and we just had the roof done nine years ago. What we found out is that there needed to be cradles or sleepers on the roof, and then a clip to go over the pipe, and that wasn't done. So we need to go up onto the roof, put these cradles in, and attach the clips, and then once we get that taken care of, we can fix the roof itself. I, of course, want to do this as quickly as possible because I hear there's snow tomorrow night coming, so that we're not shoveling snow to try to repair this. So we're definitely on the fast track of getting this done as soon as possible. And that's all I have for you tonight. Any questions? Great.
Okay, moving right along. Now we have our, let me see, what do we have next? Dr. Fay, you're up. That moment where you went. Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Superintendent Lynch, members of the school committee. I am here to provide you with my annual academic update. All right. We have a little bit of technical difficulties here. The first thing I wanted to talk about was the curricular changes that are happening. All right, perfect. All right, back at it. Here we go. All right, so I wanted to start with the curricular changes by academic department or area that have been occurring over the last school year. Starting with our English department, we added this year a new early college course for World Literature I and World Literature II, and that is offered for both the juniors and the seniors. That is a Northern Essex Community College class the students are taking while they're here at Whittier. We already offer Comp 1 and Comp 2, so this provides four different English classes that our students can leave high school with their college credit. In the math department, we continued with our math sequence. I'm not sure if you recall, but last year with freshmen, we started with Algebra I Geometry, and this year we have transitioned so that the sophomores are now taking Algebra II Geometry. By making these changes, we're actually able to provide our students with five math classes when they graduate high school, so that's another added benefit. And by doing that, we're able to offer the higher-level math classes once they get to the senior year. In addition to that, this year, we're very excited to offer to our students the AP Calculus AB exam. We actually just filed the paperwork today. This coming weekend, we're going to offer our first Saturday prep class for, I think there's about six students who are interested right now, and they're going to come in from 10 to 2 on Saturday, and they're going to mimic the real test. So they're going to take the different sections of the test. It's going to be timed, the teacher's going to work with them, so they kind of get prepared and feel for it so that they're ready for the real exam when it happens. And again, that's another higher-level added benefit that we're providing to our students. In science, we began our new science sequence. So what that means is that all grade nine students are taking straight biology. Historically, in grade nine, they take Biology I, and then sophomore year, they take Biology II, and then they take the MCAS for Biology at the end of the sophomore year. Now, everybody takes Biology, a straight class. We realigned the curriculum over the last school year in the summer, and the students will take, the freshmen will take the Biology MCAS at the end of the freshman year. What that means is, is currently half of our student body, all freshmen and all sophomores are currently taking Biology. So come MCAS time, half the school will be taking the Biology MCAS exam. So Katrina Jensen, our Coordinator of Data and Assessment, has a lot of planning ahead of her, but we're on it. In the history department, in June 2018, the state released new frameworks for history. The members of our department have been attending various sessions. We have one teacher that is actually sitting on a board for the Department of Ed where she's working with them to help create model curriculum units to be used throughout the state. So that's an added benefit to us because we have somebody kind of right in there. In addition to that, they just released a grant to update the curriculum, so I have already applied for that to make sure that our teachers are provided the funding to make the necessary curricular changes. On Friday, myself, this particular teacher, and the department head are attending a meeting with the Department of Education where they're really going to give us some information. We're hearing rumors that the pilot exam for history is coming out in 2020, 2021 for US history in the sophomore year. If that happens, we will need to make some curricular changes, and we'll obviously work with Mr. Leganis, Ms. Lynch, instructional subcommittee, and then the committee overall. But I feel like I don't want to move forward until we have this meeting on Friday and really hear from the horse's mouth what their plans are going forward. But we are always proactive, and we're going to, you know, make sure we're doing everything in the best interest of our students.
I have a question. I also understand that now there's going to be a licensure for civics and history.
So civics, over the last couple of years, has been, become a big thing. So always in the past, I'm sure you've heard of college and career readiness. Well, now it's college, career, and civic readiness. So we've been talking about that here for the last couple of years. Through the new frameworks, they created a new course in the eighth grade for all students to take, and it's kind of around civics education. And they are integrating civics into a lot of the new curriculum because that is what they want. Historically, the way it worked is that we selected, or you guys really as the committee, I should say, selected the pathway where our students took World freshman year, US I sophomore, US II junior, and then they chose Government or United Nations senior year. What that meant was that hopefully in eighth grade, they were getting World I. But as you know, we come from so many different communities. Within those communities, there are many middle schools, who's teaching what, how far they got, where did they end? So we really tried to start everybody on the same page. So we're hoping that maybe this civics class will actually give us a good foothold to move forward, and we're not going to be filling in the gaps of the world that we've been doing before. So yes, we're aware of that, and hopefully we get as much information. Our department head is on it. When I say "on it," he is on it. I get texts at night and emails. He is, today, he sent me an email to look at licensure, and so when I tell you we're going to be ahead of the game, we're going to be ahead of the game. Yes?
Two questions, Ashley.
Yes.
What's the rationale for the state having the test in the sophomore year?
The only thing is, is that it's the end of the US curriculum. So the way that they have their pathway, and I'm hoping, what I'm hoping that I hear on Friday is that we can maneuver the pathway. I would prefer it not to be sophomore year only because another test.
Well, traditionally, US traditionally has been 10th, 11th.
Right.
We were fighting this with the state department 10, 15 years ago when they first started the curriculum rewrite.
Right.
They wanted to insist on the sophomore, and the practitioners were telling them it doesn't conclude till the junior year in most cases. And my other question is, aren't the middle schools all under the safe framework?
Yes.
I mean, shouldn't they all be teaching the same thing in the seventh grade and the eighth grade?
Well, it depended on the pathway that their school committee selected, right? So we could have done different, we could have done different pathways. So as a school committee, you or the people that were here before you selected the pathway that we're currently following. But there were three or four different options, so that might have, I don't know what the other communities had selected at that moment in time.
At one point, it was just one.
But the one that we selected was that if we were in a comprehensive district where everybody, we knew what they were doing all through, you know, up till eighth grade.
Originally, it was supposed to be K to 12, and every social studies in each segment was predicated on what the state said.
Right.
So if it's fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh, all systems would be teaching. So if a kid transferred, there'd be no problem.
Right. But hopefully, maybe going forward now where they're just straight saying, everybody's going to do this new course in the eighth grade, this civics, kind of Massachusetts, Government. It's kind of based around Massachusetts. Hopefully, going forward, then that would help. But the way we had it before is that we're hoping that they took World I because that's the way the pathway was. It started in eighth grade, went to 12th grade. We don't have the eighth grade, so we started with World. And what we did when we created that curriculum way back when is we initially talked about moving current and going backwards so that we knew what they were all getting. They were all getting current, and we were, you know, going the opposite direction to try to at least give everybody the same information.
Thank you.
Kelly, I have a question.
Yes.
Or just a comment. Dave and I probably were at the same workshop about the civics curriculum, and it sounded like, and there was a woman from Desi there, and it sounds like they're starting to, they want to incorporate it in the lower grades, like grade three and grade, a little bit, little pieces of it.
Civics?
Civics, yes. And then more structured in the eighth grade statewide, so that they all come to high school with the same background.
That's good.
And then that will be incorporated into the frameworks and all of that. It was very exciting. I'm glad to see they're doing that, but also very glad to hear that we're also got our foot in the door doing it.
Of course, right? You'd be surprised by nothing of it then, right?
That's right. Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to electives. So within this year, we started a new criminal justice elective, and I have to say, it's been extremely exciting. Our teacher has brought in many guest speakers, state police, FBI agents. He has contacts with everybody we've had. He's recently, I think, bringing in a woman sheriff as well because we said we wanted to show those non-traditional roles as well so that the girls within the class can also see themselves represented within the profession. So right now, we're going through the process of getting the NCAA clearance so that any students that are taking that could also use that as a social science credit, which is really good. So it's been, it's been very exciting to see. In addition to that, last year, we went to school-wide for Title I. We used to be a targeted assistance program, and now we're a school-wide program. What that means is we're able to offer our students more opportunities. Before, we had a targeted math class and a targeted reading class only for freshmen and sophomores. Now, because we're school-wide, we have more flexibility. And saying that, we no longer have these classes, these separate classes, the teachers are kind of embedded within the regular curriculum. So our Spanish classes have actually seen an increase, which has been very exciting. We have a new Spanish teacher, so our students are really beginning to really flourish within that language area. For staff, for professional development, our focus for this school year has been social emotional learning. And I heard from Mr. James that some of you attended some sessions at your conference. SEL is also what it is referred to. The focus for our school year for all staff is that they had, they were given a book by Ms. Lynch at the end of the school year. So we give our students summer reading, so we felt as though it was only fair to give our teachers summer reading. So they read the book, Social Emotional Learning, within the classroom. Over the summer, the whole administrative team was trained by the author, Dr. William Rebus. He came in and trained us on social emotional learning, how to use it within our classroom, how to use it within the school, how to see it through educator evaluation, how to help people. So it's really been wonderful. From there, we had a woman from his company come in and train all of our department heads. She's also the other author of the book, and she conducted a train, the trainer model, so they can then go and train their staff. For the first day of school, we had two keynotes, which was a long day, but it was very exciting because we seem to always find wonderful people to present on our first day. So we had the author of the book, Dr. Rebus. He came in in the morning and really talked about social emotional learning. What was really nice is he tied it to our growth mindset initiative of last year because they do go hand in hand. It does make sense, and we wanted the teachers to know, it's not another thing, we're not moving on to the other buzzword. We're continuing with our mission of really fostering a sense of well-being and growth within, for our students. In addition to that, in the afternoon, we had Rob Riordan from High Tech High. I don't know if you've heard of the movie Most Likely to Succeed, or there's also a book, and it's based on his high school, High Tech High. He started at Cambridge, Regent Latin, and with some friends, I think, kind of opened up a charter school. It was very exciting to hear what he does in his school. There have been books written about it, movies written about it. Everything that he says, and people are following him for, are what we do here. And I felt like it was really important. Maureen sent me to a meeting, he was there, and I said to her, we have to have him because I think just what we do here on a daily basis is absolutely amazing in both the academic and the vocational side. And here's somebody who's essentially famous doing what we're doing, and I felt like I wanted the staff to hear that. I wanted them to see what they do within what he does. So it was, it was very exciting. From there, we're going to continue with our school year. This Friday, we have our second professional development half-day, again, on social emotional learning. The first day, we did actually a technique from the book with the staff where we jigsawed the book. And what that was, was we broke the entire staff into six groups, and they were mixed groups. So they were mixed vocational, academic. So they were mixed vocational, academic, guidance, nurses, not with people they work with every day, different people. And they, they each paired up, and they were responsible to read a chapter, come to the session, and share the chapter with their peers. So by the end, if they didn't read the whole book for summer reading, wink, 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 they at least could by the end of that session know what the book was about and how they can use it to help their students. So what was really great is that a lot of people said that they, there's some people that they were paired with that they've never met before, and they both have been working here for years. So it's a great opportunity to also foster the social emotional learning of our staff. From there, going forward, they're now going to be, for our next three half-day sessions, they're going to begin teaching each other a lesson on what they've done with their own kids on social emotional learning. Because what we've learned is that we're our own best teachers. We learn best from each other. Ms. Lynch says it all the time, and I truly believe it. And then last but not least, there's just a little quote for you on social emotional Any questions? I know I talk fast.
Just, I think it's wonderful that, to pull the teachers and the staff out of their comfort zone.
It was.
Because that's what our kids are faced with, and to have them handle it so well, I think that's commendable. That was a great idea.
Anybody then?
So you mentioned that six students have signed up for the AP Calc exam, AP Calc exams. Curious if, you know, what you think could be done to draw more students in to take them.
Well, so it's not an AP course. So these are just students who are in our AP, I mean, our calculus class, that our teacher said, do you want to, you want to try it? You want to do it? We've never done this before. So we're going through the auditing process through the College Board to hopefully get our class the AP designation. So the, you know, I think six doesn't seem like a lot, but when they're not even taking an AP class, and they're just saying, yeah, I'm going to try it. I want to see if I can get this opportunity. And hopefully going forward, I mean, this is the first time we've ever done it. So hopefully going forward, it'll pique some interest, maybe even after this Saturday, to go back and talk to their peers about it.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be good to get college credit, you know, and save some money, the practical side of it. Plus, certain careers, you know, they're going to need to be, take a lot of calculus in college. So it'd be good to have, you know, as much calc offering, particularly if they want to be engineers or scientists.
Kelly, I thought that you had to have an AP course to take the AP exam.
So we, you could take, so we had, we had a student previously take the AP exam. I think he was in the electronics robotics shop a few years ago, and he just went on his own and went to another high school, signed up for an AP test and took it. So you can just take the test without the designation.
And if you pass the test, they give you the credit?
You get the credit, yeah.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Because that's really all, I mean, you could, you could be enrolled in an AP class and work really hard and not produce the scores and not get anything out of it at the end of the day. So this is kind of a win-win for our kids too at the same time. The, you know, there's a little bit of difficulty in the way our scheduling works, and if we go to a true AP, we have to really change how we do the class because of the on week and off week, and so, yeah.
But you have to pay for it. College Board gets the money. They pay for it.
Do you want to have the students do like Accuplacers?
Oh, same with the place? Yeah, so after school, Katrina Jensen offers an Accuplacer program. Any of the students who are in our early college programs, so we have the Comp One, the Comp Two, another World Lit One, and the World Lit Two, they have to take the Accuplacer exam prior to even doing that. And then we have students that are taking the concurrent enrollment through our vocational programs. I think Bev or Patty might have talked about that with you in the past. They also have to take the Accuplacer exam. So we do offer it. We have offered it to all of our, I know in the past, honors juniors. Every kid, our student, I should say, had the opportunity to take it. So we do, we do offer it. It's a cost if they have it here. We have to pay unless we can find grant, funding that will pay for it. Whereas if they go over to Northern Essex, they can take it for free and receive accommodations over there.
Gary?
Yeah, I went to a couple seminars this past weekend, and it was fascinating to see how some schools are taking the SEL programs and expanding guidance very specifically in what they're doing to help the kids with trauma. Pretty amazing stuff going on.
Yeah, last, last night at the educator of the year, there's one school in Haverhill that it was amazing, a trio of teachers, just to hear what they're doing for childhood trauma and...
Amazing.
Anybody else have a question or comment?
I just wanted to say, I continue to be impressed by your curriculum development and professional development classes. You're real, obviously putting a lot of effort into it, and the team is putting a lot of effort into it.
Yes, it's a team. I've heard it's, I'm just facilitating it. Everybody else is doing it, right?
That's not true.
One thing, Kelly, you're looking at my notes here. Michelle Ryan, the lady from DOE, said...
That might be who I'm seeing on Friday.
Possibly, yeah. But she talked about looking into the Title II A funds to help offset the cost of implementing the civics curriculum and all of that.
So to, I rate the grants for the district, so I know all the funding. So Title II A is teacher quality, and we currently have a couple of positions out of that grant, so we don't have the funds right now. But that's why I applied for that additional grant for the history frameworks. You know, the Title II A goes back and forth. When I first started, you could use the funding for curriculum work. Halfway through this position, you could no longer use that for curriculum work. Now with the new SI, you're back and you can use it. So we have a couple salaries that take up a good chunk of that grant, but going forward, once things get maneuvered and, yeah, definitely. Yes, oh, yes, we do.
Excellent.
It gets, you know, cut a little bit every year, but we have it.
Again, I should, should have known. I didn't even have to ask you.
[laughing]
Okay, anybody else? No? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful as usual.
Thank you.
Yeah. And now we have Mr. Williams.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Superintendent Lynch and members of the school committee. Hi, I'm Kevin Williams. I'm the director of technology, and I'm here to give my annual update. I think this is my eighth update and the beginning of my ninth year here at Whittier Tech. I know, time flies when you're having fun. So one of the features we've been doing this year, and I'm sure Ms. Jensen last month talked to you about, is the MCAS 2.0. And we have been, spending a great deal of time and effort getting ready to understand how this works and how it affects our students. So it is computer-based as opposed to the old MCAS that's paper-based. Our students will use their iPads with a wired keyboard that we provide. Last spring, we conducted five trials of taking modified versions of the test online to test everything. Test the student iPads, test how you lay out a room, test how the caching service works, test what the teachers are going to have to know in order to give this test. And then one of the findings we find from that is that we'll have to do some extensive teacher trainings, and Ms. Jensen and I are working in partnership with all the departments during their PLC meetings to go in all throughout this year until March to teach them how to manage the test because in the room, the teacher proctoring the test is the person that starts the test for that room, stops the test for that room, restarts a test for a student who may have a problem. It's really upon the teacher in the room to have the technical skills to be able to use the portal that the state provides to start, stop, lock, unlock, and finish each one of the tests. So we're working together. We've already done one session with the special ed department. We'll do multiple with them because they have the hardest job because not only do they just have regular test takers, but then there are read-alouds, and there are prompts, and there are other accommodations. So they have an even more multitude of jobs that they'll have to worry about. So we'll be doing extensive teacher training as that. In addition, in order to help our students, we're exploring the option to use some software from Pearson, the people who use, the software is used to deliver the MCAS 2.0. They have a package that we may be able to use to deliver our own tests in-house, whether it's a math exam, an English exam, a mid-year, a final, so that our students get more practice using the tool that they'll have to use for that high-stakes test. Because in the end, really, the goal is we want to be just as successful on the computer as we are on paper, so. Another project we've done over the past six months, we've worked with maintenance to finish our access, our first phase of our access control. Why is IT involved? Well, like everything nowadays, there's a computer involved. It runs across our network infrastructure that connect to the doors, and software controls all of it down to the badges and the doors and all those other pieces. So not a piece of technology I necessarily would have thought I was getting into 10 years ago, but here we are, not 2018. And last year, we finished the new school website that we talked about last year. One of the things that we added on that we started last year with Ms. Lowell and the guidance department was the online admissions system. And one of the great benefits we found this year is through this system, because we had all the names and contacts, during the summer, we were able to reach out to our accepted students and say to them, hey, are you interested in fall sports, clubs and activities? Great, respond back to us. So before the doors even opened, our club advisors and coaches could reach out to those new students to say, welcome to Whittier. We've used our design language that we use on that website to do in the educational foundation. And more excitedly, we created a new interactive school website, a school store website that lets folks see our fantastic Whittier wear. And what's really been great, it's a great partnership where our students get to now learn how to fulfill orders that come across online because, well, we all shop on Amazon, right? All those things. It was a great partnership between us, the marketing department with Mrs. Sarno and Mrs. Crosby, and the design and visual department shop with Mr. Traynor, who took all these fantastic photos of our articles of clothing. You can see how beautiful they all look. You saw in the video as you roll over them, it shows the front and the back. It's really, we're very proud of it. It's very beautiful, really shows off our things real well, and we're really, really excited about it. We've had time to do a few other updates as well. We replaced the core of the network inside the data center where all the fiber comes together. We ran fiber out to the press box so we could extend Wi-Fi and security out to the field areas for better communication and better visibility. We continue to upgrade our staff devices as we roll out new MacBooks and iPad Pros with pencil, and continue to upgrade classroom technology so that eventually all our classrooms look the same, so that when a teacher moves from room to room, they don't have to figure out, oh, how do I get what's here up on the wall? Because there's something new, something different. We're trying to standardize all that. And last year, we installed a new point-of-sale system for the cafeteria with Mr. Bucini, and it was our first full year with that. And now our friends at Whitson gets to take advantage of that fact that we have that new system. Makes it easier for all of us, staff and students, to pay for lunch. I just have to wand my little barcode in front of the reader, and money comes out of my checking account, and I get a little poorer and a little wider. Lastly, as you know, with the website and things like that, we spend a lot of time working also on the marketing and recruitment side of things. And around open house, we created a new ad for Instagram and Facebook, and I'd love to show it to you right now. There's no words, there's no sound, it's just visual, and there it is. Takes about 30 seconds.
Very impressive.
Thank you. We're very proud of it. It was kind of a flash inspiration, something we created. And it's got just tremendous response in the week and a half that we've had it out on Instagram, Twitter, Facebook. People are really connecting with it. So we'll be able to take that concept and expand it into maybe some longer-length things to maybe highlight and focus on some of our areas or general activities here at Whittier Tech, and we plan to explore that idea over the next little bit. And as always, I need to thank my staff, Lisa Belfiore and Michael Lassert, along with Mr. Friselli and the library media area. Without my staff, we can't do any of these things. And from my staff, we'd like to thank you for your support because without you providing the resources, we couldn't do all these great things for our staff and students so they'll be ready for the world that they have to live in, the modern world. So with that, that's the end of my picture show, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Just like last year, it was very impressive. You keep innovating and keep it fresh and putting more things on the internet for people to see.
Our traffic, when I got here, it was probably 80% desktop and 20% mobile. Now we've crossed over that threshold. We're at 80% mobile and 20% desktop for all traffic on our, on our properties, whether it's the website, the foundation website, the school store, you name it, night school even. So, you know, we now, we think mobile first and desktop second, as much as many of us are like, well, I need to see it on my laptop. Nobody's looking at it on their laptop. They're looking at it on their phone. It's for the small screen that's important, not the big screen.
Just wanted to follow, that point of purchase, is that done with a card swipe or debit cards?
No, the point is, it allows parents to go online to My School Bucks, connect their checking account, or just deposit funds as they will, and then it allows the student to come in and punch in their number and debit off of that amount. Same for staff. For staff, because we have badges with the barcodes on them if you can't remember your four-digit ID because the ID isn't something that you would use every day, whereas at least the students, they needed to check out books and things like that. It's just a nice reminder to be able to go bloop and pay for your lunch, like I said.
So each student has an account that they can draw on for lunches?
If they, if them and, if their parents set one up. Otherwise, they can pay cash. They pay cash.
No, that's good.
They can even bring a $20 bill and say, put this on my account, and then spend it down, and then when they get down to a balance, the cashier tells them, lets them see the picture, all that as they go through the line.
It's pretty convenient. I'm on School Bucks.
Like I said, money goes away.
Yeah.
Hands go wider.
You know, they, they do something similar to this in my grandkids' elementary school. Now, my grandson is in kindergarten. Now, they don't have a card or anything. He has a seven-digit number he has to remember. And my granddaughter, too, in second grade. And they go in and they give their number, and it comes out of my daughter's account, I guess she funds it or whatever, but seven dig, that would be so much easier.
Mine's four.
Hmm?
I was a four.
You're four, is it? Yeah, no, it's seven digits.
I'm not sure I can remember seven digits anymore.
No, maybe.
Are we working on other doors?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, phase two. I just got a quote, actually, I dragged the guy around today to look at some other doors. But the first batch was about seven of them, all the major access points.
Yeah.
So pretty successful, how it goes. Works off of our network infrastructures. The nice thing is, that's all on battery backup backed up by generator backup, so just like our Wi-Fi, even with no power to the building, you still have power to all the doors, and you can surf the internet at the same time.
One more little thing that's kind of sticking in my craw, and it could be that it's, I've been out of school for so long that I don't know my English grammar anymore. Should the very beginning of that video say, what if there was a school?
So it did say that originally, and then the grammar nerds attacked me in the English department, and it was changed to were.
I thought were was if it was plural, so...
They told me if it is. They gave me the reasoning behind it, and I fought with them, but literally, they set upon me more than one of them.
I, I will defer to them, but it, it sounds a little off to me, so I...
From a vernacular point, that's why I wrote was.
Yeah.
And sometimes, my opinion only, grammar gets in the way of telling a good story. But...
Okay, Kevin, thank you.
Kevin, it's were if it's contrary to fact. However, it isn't contrary to fact.
I know. They gave me another one. They gave me if it's a supposition or a abstract object. It was, yeah.
I guess we better leave it.
Yeah, we could probably have a fight for that for weeks.
Just the way it is, yeah. All right, thank you so much. That was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Leganis.
You can handle it.
Yes, thank you, thank you. And by the way, I surround myself with English teachers.
And by the way, I surround myself with English teachers. Madam Chair, Superintendent Lynch, the rest of the school committee members, my principals' report. Open House, like Ms. Lynch said, was held on November 4th, 1 to 4, and what a success. It was well-attended, many interactive activities, staff presentations, and with the academics and the shop areas had demonstrations, which included interactive student demonstrations. And we heard a lot about those, you know, with the community. So it was, it was a great time that Sunday. Middle school tours began last week. The tours will be completed before holiday break. And last week, we had Ipswich in here on Tuesday, Haverell Constantino came in here yesterday, and I believe on Tuesday, we're going to have Amesbury, so our tour, tour season has begun. Our first quarter grading is over, our report cards went out February 9th. Again, tomorrow night's parent night, from 6 to 8, parents will be able to have a brief meeting with their child's academic teachers and visit their child's vocational teacher. Also, parent night from 5 to 6, they'll be held a grade-nine information session about choosing their shop areas, technical programs. Bev DeSaville takes care of that, and we want parents to discuss it with the children about possible choices, which comes quick. January or so comes very quick. Plus, there's going to be this year, there's going to be a table, Northern Essex table, and talking about Kelly's tremendous presentation on advertising our early college opportunities, which is a nice thing, too, from 5 to 6. And also, the Above the Win Influence Program, which is the program that continues to its quest to educate students about the negative influences of drugs and alcohol. During the parents' night from 5 to 6, there's going to be a display, "Weeding Through the Mist," and also a presentation on the vaping that everybody's talking about. This presentation will be going on in the health room from 5 o'clock till close. And Roxanne Grover, our superstar educator, YMC Educator of the Year, and I give her props, she's my mentor when I walked in the building 17 years ago, so we love you, Roxanne. But she'll be there answering questions, what better person to do that, has been in here for 40 years dealing with children. The Booster Club, if you didn't get your pie order in, the pies are going to be delivered on Tuesday, the 20th, and if you get your pie order in, you can probably sneak a couple Man Orchard pies in there to take off or give away for presents or keep them for yourselves. That's on Tuesday. And then again, our focus is on school safety. We're planning on have another enhanced lockdown or shelter-in-place drill sometime in November. It's, it's tough to fit in the schedules, and Ms. Lynch and I, we told you all the times that things come up, that we're like, "Okay, we can't do the drill today." But we are, we are, you know, we are going to have a drill in November, so. And then also, the advisory board for the vocational programs happened on Thursday, October 18th, and again, very well-attended, 200 or so people in technical programs were there. And then our students in the Skills USA will be taken off November 18th through the 20th in Marlboro, Mass. So, a lot of stuff going on, as you can see, that time of year. Any questions? Much.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
We have our business manager, Kara, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the committee. At the last meeting, I presented for you a variance analysis, and we, I spoke to you about the fact that when we originally prepared the budget, we did so assuming that the salaries would increase 2.5%. But as a result of contract negotiations, the salaries were increased 3%, and we also increased the employee's share of health insurance from 25% to 27.5%. As a result, on that variance report, many of the salary accounts were slightly over because of the raise, and, and some of them were also over because of additional credits that they earned and certifications. But there were also several accounts that had balances left in them, because we had staff attrition when staff changes or retires, or we had redeployments if we didn't need a teacher in one area, sometimes they moved to another area, or there's an aide instead of a teacher. So I have before you a transfer request, and the transfer request, as I stated last month, will balance those accounts as they stood during the month of October, so I would respectfully ask your request, your approval in, in doing that budget transfer.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Paul.
I would like to move that we have line item transfers in the amount of $234,755 as outlined in the business manager's memorandum of November 1, 2018. Second.
Any discussion on this? Any questions? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, so, okay.
Thank you. And also for your consideration is the FY '20, I can't believe we're going into another decade, FY '20 budget calendar, and it will follow the same format that we have done in prior years. We kind of stopped the budget process now. In December, the superintendent and the principal and I meet with the department heads. We have our two executive subcommittee meetings in both January and February, and then we have a meeting with the committee in March, public hearing in April. So I would ask for your consideration of that calendar.
Okay. What you want us to do?
I'm usually, I think you approve the calendar.
Okay.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Have a question?
Question, Paul.
Are these dates coinciding with school committee meetings?
Yes.
Or are they taking place in the afternoon or during school times?
No, the way we have done them is the two executive subcommittees, I think we do at 5:30, or it probably will be a little bit earlier this year, right before the meeting. And we do the same thing when we have the meeting with the full committee in March. And then the public hearing is done in April, just prior to the start of the school committee meeting.
I just was curious, are they taking place at different times?
No.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of those dates? Opposed? Okay.
Thank you, that is all I have, and I'd like to wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving next week.
And same to you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Going along with this budget hearing, I move that reorg be scheduled for April 8th, Monday, April 8th.
Monday, we have a meeting that week, right?
Yeah, it's on the 10th, that's what she's mentioning, that the public hearing will be on the 10th, so. I move the reorg might be the 8th, and I think if that's okay with the full committee.
That sounds...
In past years, that's what we've done, even though the original agreement, so we can suspend the rules if you wish. The wish of the body, maybe make it...
What was the original agreement?
The original agreement said the first, the first Monday, I believe, but it's not always been convenient. For many years now, we've been going the second, just prior to the school committee. So if we need, I'll suspend, move to suspend the rules for the purpose of setting the date.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Any further discussion on that? No? All in favor?
Aye. Again, so the date would be for reorg would be Monday, April 8th?
Yeah, that's what we...
Prior to the public hearing.
Okay, we'll set that date. Do we need to vote on that date?
Yeah.
Or...
We just did, didn't we?
We voted on suspending the, yeah, okay. All right, so April 8th, we'll have our reorg meeting. All right, we will go to the subcommittee reports. We have not had an executive subcommittee meeting. Joanne, would you like to do the instructional personnel?
We haven't had an instructional meeting either. We're, we were listening to the reports that we had received from the administrative team, so we're done with those tonight.
Okay. Plant operations, Paul?
Our plant operation has not met. We're looking forward to progress in the, in the field project as part of the next big thing coming up.
If we could have one for, at 6 o'clock to tour the new Allied Health Center, and any other member that'd like to see the new Allied Health Center, that would be great. Or we can put on the regular agenda.
Tony, 6 o'clock.
A plant op at 6 o'clock before the next meeting?
If that's all right, or we can make it a part of the meeting.
So that we can all...
So everyone can go.
Oh, that sounds good to me.
Close enough to look at the Christmas float?
We were, I was just going to say, we have to do both things.
Okay.
We can take a tour.
That'll be a fun night. Okay, we don't need to vote on that, we'll just post the meeting for 6 o'clock. No?
No, 6, we won't do a plant ops, we'll just go up and take a tour.
Okay, 6 o'clock then, before the next meeting. All right.
No. No. We'll have the meeting, and then we'll just leave, and we'll shut off the cameras, and we'll go up and take our tour. So we'll just make it a part of our regular agenda, 6:30. Yeah.
Well, so what are you doing at 6 o'clock?
Nothing.
A plant op?
You can't, okay. I am so confused. Okay.
We're not doing plant.
Okay. Thank you.
6:30, regular meeting.
All right. All right. Mr. Early, do you have a report for us?
I have this time.
Betting a thousand here.
I can make one.
Now we know we have this one to do. Dave?
Okay, we have the second reading, second and final reading for several policy you received in your packet. JFABE, JFABF, JICH, GBEGD, ILD, BEDA, BBBA slash BBBB. Those are presented for the second reading. Lisa passed out and put on your table in front of you this evening, JFABF. There was a little omission here, and if you take a look at that, the second paragraph, the sixth line down on the right-hand side, the word "law," that was omitted on the original one, so I move with the, with the permission of the school committee that we just unanimously agree that that's, that was just an omission, and we go along. I hate to bring this back for two more readings. So I mean, I think you had the original policy and the intent of it. Again, just, it's the second paragraph, sixth line down on the far right side.
Yeah.
It should say, "The law requires the Department of Children and Families," and so on. So if that's all right, I would, I would move all of those policies for a second and final reading.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the policies? No? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No? Unanimous, very good, thank you. So, our next meeting is December 12th, and that's the one we were just talking about, correct? 6:30.
6:30. And we'll add on the agenda the tour of the flow and...
Okay.
Tour of the new Allied Health Center.
And I know it says we have no new business posted, but I think a couple of our members would like to comment about the conference. Is that okay? Can we do that?
Of course.
Okay. Ben was there, and Joanna was there, and Gary, and Joanne, and Dave, and myself, and Lisa.
And Scott.
And Scott, oh, because, yeah, he's not here, so I can't see his face. So we had a really good showing. It was an excellent conference. I would open it up to the, the rest of you if you would like to speak, speak to the conference.
Let me get the boring part over with first.
Okay.
We had nine resolutions presented by MASC.
Oh, that's right.
So let me just briefly, and this is boring, but it's worth to go to the meetings in some ways, it's just because everyone wants to put an amendment on all of these things. Nobody's satisfied the way it's written, and they get kind of long, we weren't sure we were going to make it for supper. Anyway, the first one has to do with arming of educators, and it was rejected soundly.
Thank God.
The second was for small and rural districts, and MASC calls for a working committee to try to work with the State Department and the legislation as far as helping out these districts fund properly, because some of the bigger towns and cities get, you know, it's a, it's a matter of equity. The third one is Federal Department of Education. The government wanted to merge that with the Department of Labor, and education's too important to be doing that, so they rejected that. School transportation resolution, that has to do with, a lot of particularly, regional schools have trouble with companies bidding, so they want to make the process easier in the legislature to help them, and DESI to help them come up with bidders, so there's available busing for those rural students. Accountability standards, DESI, or MASC wants all schools be, that receive DESI funds, government funds, to be under the same rules and regulations. Scottish schools sometimes get away with different things that public educators can't or, or schools can't do. The other was somewhat controversial, was reproductive health. MASC recommends that we keep with, with a, an established health curriculum that's evidence-based, so in other words, a true health curriculum, as opposed to a more conservative, abstinence-only type of education. That was approved. Also, gender identity, because of gender, not having gendered youth through bathrooms and so on, particularly in athletics and sports, so that was, again, approved, that schools should have gender-neutral facilities for those students. So that was also approved. Finally, sports wagering, if, if the legislature passes sports wagering, wagering, they want, we want to be part of the action, so to speak. So public education wants to receive some of those funds. It's similar to the lottery in a lot of states, that, that part of the lottery money goes to public education. Sports wagering would also, any benefits of the state would go to public education. And that was special note, special notification to parents, sped parents, they wanted to increase the availability for parents to have that to five days. Some school systems said it's hard to do that, but they did approve it. So notification that, let's say your child's going on IEP, and to meet with guidance, etc. with the team, they'd want it presented in the child's language, and to give them time to, to have questions and so on. So that was approved. And finally, I'd like to thank the superintendent and fellow school committee members, and Kara, and everyone who was able to be at the dinner Friday evening. I appreciate it, it was an honor to have you there, so, thank you.
It was an honor for us to have you be awarded that lifetime membership. It's very special.
Congratulations.
We're very proud of you.
I was very thankful.
So, are you, are you saying they're, they're going to be, they're going to be allowed betting on school games, school sports? High school?
No, it's, I'm not sure exactly, they were, they just, they talked about where casinos coming into a lot of states, and that, and, and sports gambling would be allowed at, at certain gambling centers, or parlors, or something like that. Whatever benefits a state would receive from that betting at those places...
Sports in general.
In general, would go back to public education.
Okay.
Not betting on the track team.
Oh, please, no. Yeah, well, that, that was...
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Anything else you'd like to say about the conference?
No, other than that, each year, it's, Gary and I were talking the way up, a lot of, it's on the cutting edge. I mean, they were talking about cell about three or four years ago, and this conference had a lot of that. It also had a lot about trauma, individual trauma of families and of students, and what we need to be aware of as, as teachers and as educators and administrators. So I mean, and the speakers they have have been outstanding. I go back many years, and some of the speakers have been the top of their, of their field within this state and other states, in talking about technology and improvement and curriculum and instruction, and the total picture of, of education, so. And once in a while, we have a comedian, right, Maureen? Or a couple.
Yeah. They were some great speakers.
So I mean, it's, I think, as I believe Kelly was talking earlier, when professionals see that what they're doing has been replicated in other places, it affirms their position. And I think the school committee people, sometimes, you know, we, we know what a great school this is, and we have a chance to see that, but we also get a chance to move ahead because we see other things and, you know, kind of be on the cutting edge and follow our superintendent and, and for the, for the sake of the district. So I think, I think it's, any, any opportunity to network and workshops and things like that is fantastic.
That's great. Joanne, anything you would like to add?
No, I was just going to also recognize that it was so nice for us, as well as for Michael.
Yes.
Yes, we also have one of our own who has been gone for us. Mr. Gilbert was our chair for many years, and he is retiring from the MASC.
He says, he says he is, but I don't know, she's not...
He also was recognized, so it was a very nice night for Whittier, to have two of our outstanding and long-term colleagues recognized.
Also, Triton had a, Dina Sullivan, so...
Yeah, and, and Debbie Cho got a leadership award, but Dina was made a life member as well.
Tony, you look great.
It's also really good to meet people from here on the social network as well. We don't really get a chance to sort of socialize with each other. So, that was really good.
That was very nice.
As well as, many of the programs are really...
Yeah, they were.
Passionate, what people are doing.
They were. Joanna, anything to add?
I just, I enjoyed the same kind of things that you did. I ended up going to one of those late-school start-time kind of presentations at the very end. And I was interested to find out, because I, you know, I had four teenagers. It was really a nightmare. And so, I wanted to know, you know, what are the results? And so, some of these schools presented some of the things that had happened, you know, pros and cons. And it seemed like the pros were really for the younger students. And for the older students, it seems like the jury is still out. You have some parents who are saying, "Great, we're not having as many battles in the morning." And, but then, we're also hearing that statistic-wise, nothing really changed. So, it was interesting to see that. And also, I was surprised, you know, being psych major before, because I really wanted to see that, oh, this is the best possible thing. Definitely do a late start time. But I had a great conversation with some of the people on school committees who had implemented this.